I don't know. All right, hang on. All right, everybody mute if you're not talking, please. Go ahead and get started. This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, May 26, 2020, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and non-voting ex officio member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Nathan? Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Schussner?
Here.
Seelinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
Thank you.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Superintendent?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Move approval, Marvin.
Second, Nathan.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
No, no, roll call.
Ms. Edgar, will you please take the roll call?
Ms. Amundson? Ms. Amundson? I'll skip her. Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schussner?
Aye.
Ms. Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Ms. Amundson?
It looked like she froze. She said her entire application shut down.
Restart, what are we voting on?
You're voting on the approval of the agenda, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. 7.01, approval of 2020 to 2021 school district budget. Superintendent?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to John Collison, Executive Director, Business Services.
All right, I'm going to share my screen here. As soon as I can figure out which one it is. There we go. You should see the budget book on your screen now. This will be a little bit different since we've normally sat in a room around a square table and gone through this kind of, just flipped through the pages, page by page. I'll try to not make you motion sick by scrolling through the screen this year. I just want to say thank you to my staff that has helped put a lot of hours into this, to Eric and Lori, Jared, Jill, Andrew, and many other people around the district cabinet, superintendent, and so on. We've spent a lot of hours on this, and here we are tonight to go through the proposed budget for the '21 school year. If it's okay, I'll just say FY '21, which means fiscal year '21, which refers to the 2020-2021 school year. Make it easier for all of us. All right, so I think what would be best is if informally you just ask questions. I can't really see if somebody's raising their hand, so if Deborah, if you can just jump in and cut me off or do whatever, that would be better. And rather than wait till the very end. So I'm going to start then with budget highlights. On the opening cover, page, well, like, 3 in the book there, but basically, the general fund spending is increasing 3.8% overall. It is structurally balanced, and by structurally balanced, I mean all of our recurring revenues are greater than our recurring expenditures. We do have some one-time things in there, like spending our long-term facilities, maintenance, revenue, fund balance that was left over from FY '19, worked into the FY '21 budget. So it does look like there's a deficit, but again, the recurring portion, which is the most important, is balanced even to a small surplus right now, so it's where we want it to be. We are expecting, as is in law, a 2% increase to general education state aid. And when we get to the end of next year, a little over a year from now, we will, if everything goes as planned, have an unassigned fund balance that exceeds school board policy. So this budget would comply with what we need to, from your perspective, if we look at that policy. There is a lot of uncertainty, of course, with COVID-19. We don't fully know everything. We've talked a little bit briefly up to this point about things that we think we know and things that could happen. I think the biggest thing we're keeping our eye on is what's going to go on with the state of Minnesota budget. Just given the amount of deficit that they are projecting right now, it would seem like we're perhaps set for no increase in general education aid for FY '22 and '23. But again, that isn't usually determined for a year from now anyway, so maybe something will drastically improve in the economy and the situation, and maybe there will be an increase. But right now, we'll talk about it later tonight. We're planning for a best case and a worst case scenario for the next couple of years to help guide you in your decision-making. And then, within this budget for FY '21, we have made zero assumptions for how to spend money from the Federal Cares Act. And the Federal Cares Act has two components of money within it. There's the ESER funds, which I put on there, which is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, which we would get a portion of the $140 million that's been allocated to the state of Minnesota. We don't have our number yet. It is going to be based on formula and consistent pretty much with our Title I allocation, so we'll learn that soon. And then, there's GEAR money. I didn't mention that because that was another component of it that I guess I didn't realize when I was making this up, but the GEAR is the governor's emergency education relief, and we should get a portion of that $43 million that the state has. That portion is being talked about, that the priority is for summer school, technology, basically wraparound services for the very short term, whereas the ESER, the first pot I talked about, the larger portion, is more going to be, I believe, at our discretion. And there's a whole bunch of uses, but what I was reading is basically, it says, "Any purpose consistent with ESSA," or the Elementary-Secondary Education Act. So that would give it a lot of broad flexibility for us to decide what we need and when we need it. Class sizes, we are staffing all of our sections right now at or below target, so we go building by building, grade by grade. We take the school board target, and if we need to, we add sections. If we are appearing that we have more than we need, then we reduce sections, and all that occurred in the March timeframe. So it was using kids that were enrolled as of mid-March or early March, and then we will continue to watch that throughout the summer, and we will add sections as we need or if we need to move some around because where the enrollment has gone down for some reason, we can move sections around to different buildings if we have to. There are 10 contingency teachers put in the budget, just like we have for the last several years. These would be able to be used wherever we need them. Usually what happens is enrollment does tick up at certain buildings throughout the summer, and once we get to a certain point, we add another, say, third-grade section at Jefferson, for example. And then we make the call, and we put out a third-grade posting, and then that's one of the 10 is used at that point. Some enhancements in the budget that are new this year that weren't in last year's budget, we have PTEC. There is VAT grant that we were awarded, $500,000 for the current year that we're in, and then $500,000 for next year. And I understand that what we didn't spend this year, because we've hardly spent any of it, carries over into the next year by the state, so we'll have a healthy amount to work with for next year. We did put in a sixth school resource officer, so we have signed an updated contract with the city on that. However, it does need to go to city council, and it needs to be approved by them and their staffing allocations, so just because we've agreed to it and we are able to fund it does not mean the city is going to be able to fund their share of that sixth officer. We did, yes, go ahead.
John, can you explain what funding we're using to pay for that?
Absolutely. Yep, so that comes out of the Safe Schools levy, and there was some one-time aid that we received in the current school year. We put that aside, we didn't use that yet, and so we'll actually be spending a little bit more on an annual basis for the next few years than what we're bringing in in new money, but with that one-time money that was sitting in a fund balance, you know, it should last for three, four years without running out. So we've got a funding plan there for at least a few years, and then we need to address after that. The off-schedule compensation, we did a market study, and that's our non-union group of supervisors, managers, others, employees, and we've worked with the school board to negotiate a new work agreement for that group of employees, so they're being adjusted per that agreement. And then, within the budget, there are construction expenditures listed under building construction for the new voter-approved projects, as well as there's new debt payments worked in the debt service fund, so we'll talk about those when we get there. Any questions on our budget highlights before I move on? All right. I think you all will recognize yourselves on page 4. Page 5 is our table of contents. Page 6 is a brief letter from the superintendent. Page 7 is a letter from me. I would just point out a couple of things in here. Right in the middle there, talking about our bond rating and saying, you know, there is a couple notches higher that we could have gotten, although AA is a very high rating, and because of that, we got into the market right at the right time, right before things got a little bit crazy with coronavirus. We were able to issue the 20-year bond for the new construction projects at a rate of 2.23%, so that was a very low interest rate that we have locked in for 20 years on that bond, so we're very happy about that. I also did mention in here that, again, we're, things are uncertain, and it'll be interesting to see what happens statewide as we head to next year's funding session with the state legislature. We do have the strategic plan, a page for that in the budget book, as well as the graduate profile. These pages are unchanged, these have, we've been using these for a couple of years now, so I'm not going to necessarily comment on those unless the superintendent or anyone else would like to say anything. So budget timeline. The planning for this year's school district budget started last July. It was around July 22, when the Department of Education opened up the system for us to start putting in some of the data that they need to collect from us to set the fall levy, and the fall levy is the budget for this school year that's coming up, FY '21. So really, in my mind, the budget process kicks off in July of '19, and it goes all the way through December of '21. So at any given time, we have two or three budget years that are open and in process, and it's an ongoing, continuous cycle, shown by the timeline here. The board had their first chance to give input in September, when we showed the preliminary maximum levy, and then the board took action on October 1st to set the preliminary maximum property tax levy amount. The board held a truth and taxation hearing on December 3 to give the public a chance to talk about the tax levy, which is, again, this upcoming budget. And then the school board approved the levy on December 10. Oops. And then we've been working on staffing and other things through the last couple months. That kicked off in January and February. By March, we had that all dialed in, and then Human Resources goes to work in contacting people and hiring positions and moving people around as necessary. This is not a legislative season, although the legislature did adjourn on May 18 with, as far as I could tell, no real increase in funding, no decrease other, which is good. But again, this session was not a huge one that we expected new money anyway. And then here we are on May 26, studying the budget. As we move forward, we hope that the school board will approve the budget by June 16, because we do need a school board-approved budget by July 1 to operate and to make legal expenditures for next school year. As we go through next school year, we'll take account of all students on October 1, and we'll do a lot of behind-the-scenes work on the budget to make some budget revisions, things that have changed over the summer, if anything has. And then we'll bring to the board around mid-December, probably around the 15th, to ask for approval of an updated revised budget. And as we get into 2021, we'll just do some of the more, you know, a review and checkpoints where we do budget revisions again, and then we're heading into audit season, and by the time we close everything out, it's about December 31 of 2021. Any questions on the timeline? All right. This next page in the budget book, page 12, is very similar to how it's been in the past. We've updated a couple of things. One, I just pointed out here in bold that with the fund balance that we're projecting to end the school year with, this current school year, FY '20, of around $20 million, it does give us some leeway in case something really goes wrong, like a pandemic. So we do have a reserve, and this is the perfect reason why we have a reserve in case something is out of our control. As far as our enrollment history, we, a few years back, we were at 17,445, and we were up to 18,296 this school year. We are projecting 18,446, and that's pretty much the basis of how this budget was built, as far as the revenue. And then, as we talked about in our enrollment projections back in February, we're projecting flat growth or pretty flat enrollment for the next few years, and that's kind of a factor of the number of births that were recorded a few years ago. They were a little bit less than the years before that, and so if nobody new moves to town, if the people that were born here stay here, we're projecting that it would be flat. But we've had this same projection in the past where it's been flat, and then you can see by the chart on the left, it just keeps going up, 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 year after year. I am cautiously optimistic that we'll hit the target, although it does seem that our numbers are not quite to 18,446 yet, and I'll talk about that, I believe, a little bit further on, but I'm just curious if, because of the pandemic, people are not out registering right now. Even though we have been open and we have been available online, or, you know, able to take registrations electronically right now, but some people may be waiting until we reopen or are waiting a little bit to decide if they're going to enroll their children for next year. So high level by the numbers. Again, we serve 18,296 students out of a population of 135,000, plus or minus. We are the seventh-largest school district in Minnesota with 218 square miles, which is a pretty large district in terms of size and terms of numbers, but size being square miles, that's a large district. We have about the same number of staff and volunteers as we did last year. Our volunteer hours are down about 3,000 hours, and that's primarily because they haven't been able to assist us over the last couple of months in person, so the tracking kind of stopped there in mid-March. All right. Page, I believe this is 14, on property taxes. So we just historically have tracked what does the property tax levy mean to a house that's valued at exactly $200,000 year over year? So assuming the house had never changed value, it stayed at $200,000 the whole time, what would have the tax been each year? And you can see, back in 2011, it was $626 a year. It popped up a little bit in 2016. That's when the 2015 Operating Referendum first hit the property tax rolls. Then it started actually coming back down, and now with the voter-approved referendum of 2019, it went up about $47, $48 a year, about the same as what we had been advertising and communicating.
I have a question?
Yes.
I think I asked this last year, but I'll ask it again. The chart that you were just referencing of the school taxes payable between 2011 and currently, that does not account for inflation, correct?
That's correct.
So if we really wanted to know what those dollars were back then compared today, then you'd have to use an inflation calculator to figure it out?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not asking you to do that, but just, so people know that, you know, the fact that gas costs five cents a gallon 40 years ago doesn't mean it should be costing five cents a gallon now, but although we're kind of close to that.
I have thought about redoing this graph, and then, but then the amount would change every year, so it wouldn't be at 200,000, but we could try to keep it to what the average price of a house is, and then you'd probably see the line going up, you know, it'd be climbing, so, nope. All right. So this is all funds on page, are we up to 15 now, I think? And just showing the percent that each of the funds means of the total overall budget that we are proposing. So the general fund is, of course, our largest fund, $241 million. That would represent 59.8% of the expenditures for next year. Normally, we don't have anything budgeted in building construction, and because we don't have any guaranteed projects, because we don't have any approval to proceed with anything yet from you, we usually do that in the summer, but right now, we know that we're going to spend about $74 million in the next school year on the construction of the new buildings. So since we know that, and that's all charted out for us by the architects and everybody that's been helping us, construction manager, we just decided to work that in as part of the original budget, so you could clearly see that that's the approximate amount of construction that's going to happen in the next school year on the buildings. And that would represent an 18% of the budget. Internal Service Fund at 9.6, that's our, like, health insurance fund, dental insurance fund, work comp fund, and then our Printing Services Fund, all added up as one piece of a pie there. This just takes that chart from the previous page that I was just talking about and shows it to you with a little bit of words behind it to kind of expand on what do they each mean. I guess I would just point out on the general fund, there are a couple other components of the general fund that I don't specifically list here, I just say it in the last sentence, that the general fund also includes two additional subcomponents. The non-allocated fund, which we call is Fund 10, that's where we put donations and fundraisers that our schools get, and then the Student Activities Fund, which is new, we have to start counting for that within the general fund. We put that as its own Fund 50, and that's all money raised by the students to be spent by the students, and so we've been including that on the reports you've been getting on a monthly basis, just showing how much the students have been raising and how much they've been spending, and that's new this year that you really hadn't seen in the past. They've had that kind of activity, it's just been run in separate checking accounts outside of your control. And now, by law, you need to take control of that and approve their expenditures as they go. All right. General Fund Revenue, this chart is very similar to how it's been in the past. The state aid portion, though, keeps creeping up, the percentage, I think, is up a couple points there, but basically 77.6% of our revenue in the general fund is going to come from the state of Minnesota in one way or another, whether it's general ed aid, special ed aid, or any other grants from the state. And property taxes are going to account for 17.8% of our budget, and so that's the levy that people are paying right now. They paid their first half on May 15, and their second half will be due October 15, so $42 million of the levy goes to fund the general fund. Federal aid is very small component, 2.8%, although, once we figure out all the federal revenue and figure out where that should be spent, that would make that tick up a little bit this year. For right now on the federal revenue, we're just assuming the normal things that we already know about, like the federal special ed aid and the federal Title I, Title II, Title III programs that we've been a part of for many years. This next page, we're just trying to chart out and show that the majority of the money that we are approving within the budget is for student instruction. And on the next page, I'm going to show you a little bit more details on student instruction, but you can see over the last few years, we've gone from 140 million up to 156 million, an increase of 16 million. Our instructional and pupil support is everything from transportation services, so contracting with first student to do that, plus it's our social workers, school counselors, those kind of supporting positions that can have student contact as well, but not necessarily the teaching group or the paraprofessional group. That's gone from 37 million up to almost 43 million. And then, just for a reference point, over that same time, our administration, which is our school board superintendent and our principals, has been relatively flat. It's gone up about $300,000, so, I mean, I think that's the direction people want to see, is that we keep putting more and more of our money towards student instruction, student support, and we're not rapidly growing our administration at the same time. So on this next page, we break down into these different colored sections. So what does student instruction mean? Student instruction is special ed, middle school, high schools, elementary, English learner, activities, our title programs, career and tech, gifted and talented. So if you add all of those up, that's about 65% of the general fund. Oops, and then the instructional and pupil support are things like the transportation. MDE actually has a code, the Assistant Principals, in there as part of that support. I think maybe the thought being that Assistant Principals have more student contact, so they are classified as that. Guidance, counseling services, media, health, like the health office nurses and such, social workers, those are all part of that support service. And then you've got maintaining your sites and your buildings through operations and maintenance, is the day-to-day cleaning, mowing the lawn, doing light repairs. Then the long-term facilities maintenance is also part of the general fund, and those are the longer, or the bigger projects that we have you approve on the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan, as well as utilities and other small repairs and things like that. Any questions on this page? I would point out, I guess, that's school board. We did hold your budget exactly flat. I know we had talked about potentially doing school board raises, but we did not work that into our first proposed budget here for you yet. All right, so within the general fund, then another way you could slice and dice the budget is you can break it up by object of expenditure. Salaries and benefits, of course, are our largest expenditure. About 80% of our budget or more goes to paying our staff for the work they do. That's very consistent with other school districts. Our purchase services, sometimes referred to as contracted services, includes all the utility bills that we pay, like to Minnesota Energy, Rochester Public Utilities, any attorneys we hire, but I want to point out that of the $30 million, because sometimes there's confusion here, 30 million doesn't mean we have 30 million of consultants doing random activities for us, but half of that money goes to paying for first student, kids on the go, so that's the school bus services, and then our utility bills. So those are included in there, and they're over half of what the purchase services So those are included in there and they're over half of what the purchase services are made up of. Supplies, material, capital, other, I mean, we could cut all those to the bone and you're not going to make a very huge dent in times of budget crisis or needing to make large adjustments quickly. You can suspend purchases of all those things, but really, if you're going to make any substantial reductions in a budget, like a public school district, it has to come from salaries, benefits, or your contracted services. That's where the majority of the money is spent and that's where the, unfortunately, the majority of the cuts then would be if that were happening. All right. Then we head into some frequently asked questions. These are all the same questions we've asked before and answered in the budget book. I'm thinking of making up some new ones for the next year's budget book, but for right now, we've got the same questions and answers. And so how do you, how much do you spend on per student? So what we've done is we've, consistent with previous years, we've taken the proposed budget divided by the projected enrollment and it shows that we'll spend about $13,000 per student next year in the general fund compared to 12,705 in the current year. That's the, the budget is going up by 3.8%. Again, about 0.8% of that is because we are expecting more students, so then that drives more costs with more students. The other 3%, I believe I broke down today, about 0.8 or 0.9 of that is long-term facility maintenance. And then the other 2% pretty much matches the inflationary increase we're getting on general education aid, as well as some cross subsidy reduction aid from the state of Minnesota. So we've put together again, a very structurally balanced budget that is not increasing really faster than the rate of inflation when you kind of pull out that long-term facility maintenance piece that we're planning to use in, out of the fund balance. Class size ratios. We took the enrollments that we had as of May 14th, we compared that to the FTE we have in the budget as of May 14th. And then we just divided that to show you kind of what the average class size is compared to the school board targets. So kindergarten, we're averaging about 17 students per section. Now that might mean at one school, there's 19 and 20 kids per section and another school there might be 15 and 16. So it doesn't mean every class is exactly perfect 17, but that is the average. And you can kind of just notice the other ones there. And I guess I'd just point out that we have been criticized in the past for this class size target being higher than some other districts. But on the flip side, when you actually break it down, you average it all out, we are staffed below that by about 13%. So, and again, that's really related to, you don't seem to, except in your district-wide option schools, very rarely does it work out that you have exactly the right number of kids in each grade to make perfect target size classes. So sometimes you're right up at the limit and sometimes you have smaller classes because you're just past the target and you want to add that next section and then you have smaller class sizes because of that. Any questions?
John, this is Director Barlow.
Yes.
Quick question, how does our average spending per student compare with other districts within the state of Minnesota?
I'm going to look that up for you. I don't have that off the top of my head right now, but I have the tools and analytics to be able to do that, though.
Okay, thank you.
Just jotting down that note. All right. Any other questions on class sizes? This is our chart of full-time equivalent staff. We're going to talk a little bit more in detail later, so I guess maybe at this point, it's just maybe notice that we had 2572.5 in the 1819 budget. Our budget for last year was approved at 200634. And this one is slightly less than that at 200627 FTE. And again, I'm going to point out some of the changes to you as we get into one of the appendices there. I really like this chart that AMSD Association Metropolitan School Districts prepares with LRS. And it just shows that since the 2001 legislature took control of a greater portion of school funding, the green line shows what the state legislature has actually increased funding over time compared to had they just set it to like the consumer price index and just said, education funding will just grow at the same rate as CPI. The formula would be now at 7,206 per pupil unit compared to what it actually is set at for the school year at 6,567. So the $639 per pupil unit difference actually is 12.6 million dollars of funding that we have not been able to keep up with inflation. And that's why almost every district in the state of Minnesota has gone out for an operating referendum, because they've had to. They've had to say, we can't keep up when inflation is not, or our funding is not keeping up with inflation, we have to go and ask taxpayers for more, just to get us back to the 2003 level. This graph, make it a little larger. How much does districts spend on athletics? We spend about $202 per pupil on activities and athletics. Compared to our peer group, the average is 280. So, you know, if we are considering budget reductions in the future at some point, athletics, you know, might sometimes rise on some people's list, but the data shows that we are not overspending on athletics. We are below the average quite a bit there and almost the lowest in our peer group. And then if you look at just locally even, we're well below the average and the lowest spender on athletics. Administratively, we're right in the middle of the pack and we've been right at the average this year, we came in just, you know, four hundredths of a point below average compared to our peer group. So it would seem that, you know, we're reasonable on there. Could we maybe make some adjustments, maybe? But, you know, we're right at the average marker there in administration. Staffing ratios, so this looks at all licensed teachers, so it's going to look at, you know, elementary, secondary, special ed, social workers, counselors, anyone that's a licensed teacher, and then divides it by the number of pupil units. And so on this list, you actually want to be at the bottom. So the closer you are to the bottom, the better staffed you are compared to your peers. So we are better than average. We have one teacher per 14.0 students. Again, that's not our class size of 14 on average, it just means licensed staff in the system, one to 14. And, you know, there's only three districts there that are staffed slightly more generous than we are. Counselors and social workers. Now this data, I will say, if I didn't point that out yet, that it is lagging a year. So this is the 2018-19 year and we put a lot of emphasis in the 2020 year of staffing our counselors and social workers. So it'll probably be on the next year's graph when we look at this, that we'll see that finally pick up. But, I mean, there might be a chance that because of the counselors and social workers we've been adding in, that maybe we're at the bottom or the second from the bottom by the time we get there, when this graph catches up with us. But clearly, we've put a priority on staffing counselors and social workers and it shows because we're well below the average. And when you actually look at the total number of FTE of social workers and counselors, we have the most number of them of any district on this list. So we have more, more FTE committed to that work than any of the other districts on this list, just happens to be our ratio is the fourth best. Shrink this back down. All right. So this is a listing of our debts. I don't think we need to go over this too extensively, just notice that there were a couple debts at the top of the list that are marked paid in full and off the list, so those are gone. And coming up in this next school year, we are making the final payment on some major renovations we made to Hawthorne and Mayo about 20 years ago. So that last payment's made on February 1st, 2021. And then of course, we have the new bonds for the new schools at the very bottom, showing that those will be on the books here till 2039-40, because it's a 20-year bond. This is our debt service, so this is the amount of principal and interest payments we make in a given year now. In FY '21, our debts will be $23.1 million. Some of that's funded through the general fund, some of it's funded through the debt service fund. We have scheduled it so that after a few years here, it does drop down a little bit and that was done intentionally as we were preparing for the last election, just in case another expansion is needed in the future, there'll be that natural falling off time where we could run another referendum if needed. And the perceived increase would be less because, you know, for example, here when you go from $23 million down to 18 million, you could probably take on another certain number of million dollars of debt and people might not even notice that their taxes might stay about the same as they were. So we did that, we had the foresight to do a little bit of planning this time to make sure that we have that happen a couple times here over the next few years. I'd just comment that the graph at the bottom of this page is also probably lagging a year here. So while it shows that we're well below average and we're the lowest spender on debt compared to our peers, that will catch up to us and I would expect that we'll be more near the average than, once we make this accounts for the new referendum that passed in 2019. So that might not even show up on the graph next year, but it will be in the 2021. We'll, again, probably move closer to that bar and higher up this list, so it'll be more average. The purpose of this graph is to just show that if you take the voter-approved referendum plus the local optional revenue that the school board can take or not take, and you add them together, it gets you a per pupil funding above and beyond the general education aid. There are about four districts there that are pretty much at the max, so they can't really go higher unless inflation, they've got inflation built in there, maybe it will creep up. The average on this list is 1942 and you can see that Rochester is on the far right here as the second lowest. And St. Cloud would be, because they're at 724, I would know that they're, they have no voter-approved referendum. They are all in local optional, so it's controlled by the school board and they have no voter-approved referendum. So they're really, if we're tight and suffering, they, they would be feeling it even more than we do. So the average on this list is 1942. So, you know, Lakeville, North St. Paul, Maplewood, Mountainsview, Rochester, St. Cloud are on the below average side of this peer group. And then open enrollment, funding follows the students. So as students leave our district and go to a different public school district, we do not get that state funding. And in some cases, though, we're still responsible for some of their costs, such as the special education bill that follows them. But 2,034 students approximately in the 1819 year left our district. Although, if you look at the red line, that means 416 students from other public school districts decided to leave their district and come to the Rochester Public Schools. So the net loss of students was about 1,618. The number had been pretty flat there for five, six years and it has been creeping up here over the last few years. Although, the superintendent and I have talked before that we don't necessarily, we wouldn't have had a spot in a physical building, a classroom for 2,034 more students. So some of that, you know, is needed. But it'll be real interesting to see as we open up new buildings, if any of the students decide to come back based on the perception of new schools or not. So we'll be watching that to see what happens over the next couple of years.
John, I'm sorry for interrupting. You couldn't see me with my hand up. So do we have any way of learning why people are leaving the district? I mean, any kind of an exit interview? And then the same thing for people who choose to open enroll into Rochester?
We do not have access to that. I mean, that's something that could be asked of them and see if they would voluntarily tell us, but there is no reason needed to give to your district when you're leaving them, nor do you need to tell them why you're coming, if you're coming to them. So we don't know that.
No, I understand that, that even incomplete data from people who chose to respond could be useful in determining whether there need to be any changes to accommodate students who are leaving, who might not. I realize then we probably have to build more schools, but just an observation. Thank you.
So John, kind of along those similar lines is, and I know you have it in a different presentation, but do you know off the top of your head a general guesstimate for the population in charter schools in Rochester? You know, which are a bit more specialized, like Beacon Academy and so forth?
Yes, I can, I'm looking at my other screen quick, going back to the February 18th board meeting, going to pull up enrollment projections quick, can just see if I can tell that. So charter schools in our district, so we have a Beacon Academy of 123, Rochester Math and Science Academy, 414, Rosa Parks of 69, Rochester STEM Academy of 130. So if I added those up real quick, about 736 of those 2,034 are going to charter schools in our district.
Okay.
That would mean then the other 1,300 are probably going to districts on our borders.
Yep, thanks.
And John, this is Director Barlow again. So it's not necessarily a negative thing that students and/or families choose to enroll their students in different districts. That's part of, most districts have the same policies we do that allow for open enrollment. So that's part of beauty, I suppose, of living in Minnesota where each district can adopt that policy and allow for this free flow of movement. Just a comment of having good policies that support this.
Yep.
A quick question for Mike is, you know, Byron recently had a failed referendum vote because they're nearing capacity and they're talking about possibly closing their open enrollment. Have you heard anything recent on that?
I've heard to say that there's two surrounding districts are having conversations about that. I don't think they've made a proper decision. I will add that our surrounding district do bring their buses into our district to pick up students. That is not a practice that we use. For students that are enrolling, open enrollment in our district, we go up to our border, but do not drive into other districts' boundaries in order to pick up students.
All right. Well, that was the main part of the budget book, although it gets very interesting in appendices too. So maybe, are there any other questions anyone wanted to ask on the first part of the budget there?
John?
Yes.
Jean Marv, just a quick question. Is there, I know you were looking at the budget for the next school year. Is there a chance that the state will not provide funding to school districts throughout Minnesota based on taxes being filed later?
Sure, we're not hearing that. One tool they would have available if they got into a crunch would be to shift payments around and, you know, make us whole that way or to shift money from year to and, you know, make us whole that way, or to shift money from year to year, which sometimes means just delaying it a few days, so it's not on their books for June 30th. But maybe it comes July 5th, which doesn't have a material impact for us, but yet makes the state's budget balance. So they've got some tools they can do, and I haven't been hearing that they need to use any of them right now. But we are just monitoring that and paying attention to what they're saying.
Okay, thank you.
All right, appendix one. We'll maybe point out some of the full-time equivalent position changes that are included within this proposed budget as compared to last year's proposed budget. There were a couple of questions today, I saw that, wondering about the associate principals to assistant principals. So that was something that had been negotiated with the Rochester Principals Association last year, and it is included as part of their salary settlement and fit within the school board-approved parameters. So even though it is going to cost more to have assistant principals instead of associate principals, it did fit within the overall budget that, that we had to work with them. So the lead principals took less of a raise, if you will, to support the associate principals being promoted into assistants. We do have three new assistant principals. There's going to be one at P-Tech, the new grant-funded program, so we'll be operating that, as well as Bishop Elementary is getting an assistant principal. And at ESC in the rail program, we are changing from a lead teacher model to an assistant principal there as well, so that that can do more of the administrative and supervision of the other teachers in that program. So those are the three new assistant principals.
I would add a little bit too, a couple of years ago when we started the formula, Bishop was, size-wise, hoped to get an associate principal. But their principal at the time felt that that funding for provision, so we allowed that. But as we were, Bishop is one of the buildings that's going to be designed and billed. He thought it was important that Jared may be pulled from the head building quite a bit to work on that project. So we felt it was important that he have additional administrative support, which, once it becomes a 720 school, then it would be allocated that as well.
Yep. Right after we had approved the budget last year, we had switched a principal on special assignment down to the coordinator of equity. So that really has already happened, but it's just reflecting kind of lagging here by a year because it was not listed that way in the original budget book last year. So that would be the minus one there and the plus one here.
John, do you want to speak to just a little bit of high level about the, I don't know what we call it, the staffing book or the staffing formula book?
Sure.
Just about how, you know, we're not, you know, superintendent said, you know, how you've classified small, small building, large building. Just, just a few words on that would be great. Thank you.
Sure, yeah, so this is probably our third year using a more formal process and really classifying our schools by, by size and then allocating a consistent staff to all of them, to make sure that they're all being treated equal as a starting point. And they get the same number of administration, the same number of clerical, the same number of instructional coaches and reading teachers and so on and so forth. And then, based on the compensatory or the Title I funding, the principals allowed to spend that basically how they see fit. So they work with cabinet, with their supervisor, and figure out what would be the best position. Some involve their whole leadership team, might be another administrator in the building. Some put it out to their staff and say, "Help me figure out how we should use our compensatory and title money for the next year." So it really is a lot of principal discretion on how they choose to lead and the decisions they make in changing positions from year to year. But as a starting point, the district provides from the general fund a certain number of base staff so that whether you walk into Bishop or you walk into Sunset Terrace, you're going to see basically the same type of positions, so that we're all starting at the same point.
Thank you.
All right. If we start on the teacher page, right up, almost missed it there because it's almost right in the heading on adult literacy. And there are a couple of questions there, and what's the impact of taking away 3.4 adult literacy teachers? As you can tell, we were at 16.37 and 16.37 two years in a row. And we looked a little bit deeper this spring here with the program manager over there. And she gave us her staff list and said, "Oh, I really only have 12.97." So that's how they've been operating, is at 12.97. And so we're just adjusting the budget book to reflect what she is actually staffing over there. So it's a dynamic program. They're often seeking different grants, and it's really dependent on the number of students that come. So as funding increases or student increases, she may request additional staff and bump up. And then, when the funding dries up or there aren't as many students, then she'll reduce through attrition and things like that as well, so.
John, I have a question. This is Workman.
Yes.
Is it accurate to say then that those 16.37 positions were funded only on paper and not on reality? So that when you moved them, there was no loss of money? It's, I'm assuming that whatever was set aside for those 3.4 was just probably moved somewhere else?
That, that would be a good way of saying it. It was on paper, but it really wasn't what we were paying for or, you know. So in other words, I didn't see 3.4 people get laid off or lose their jobs or anything right now because we've been operating at 12.97, so.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah. Within the elementary education, I just want to point out, there's a little asterisk by grade one. Within each of these numbers, there's, that's where we hold the five positions that we have for general education. So I've talked before about having 10. We have five that we classify as special ed and five that we classify as general ed, and we put the five in grade one. So really, when we started the year in 1819, we had 60 first-grade teachers, then 62, and now we're going to 63. So each of those numbers includes five additional that will get used wherever we need them throughout the summer and the next school year. I think there were some questions that came in from board members today about, you know, "How come we're going down 11.15 when we're growing?" And as I was comparing both budget books, we did notice that our growth is not necessarily in our elementary this year. Our growth is more in our secondary. And so we were down students in our elementary. And I'm trying to find where I had responded today on that. We had 9,210 elementary students in the budget book, so a year ago when we were planning. And this year, we have 9,088. So just pure, you know, when you're less students, you would naturally have less elementary education teachers when you go building by building, grade by grade, year over year. We also were confronted with a change in compensatory funding, being reduced about $1 million. And again, this is principal choice where, you know, a couple of reading teachers were not prioritized or unfortunately had to be cut because a principal may have been buying them and they've lost some of their funding and couldn't afford to keep every position that they bought with their compensatory money. Where we see these positions, they're called elementary education. That, to us, means reading and math interventionist or support. And those are all funded by compensatory and Title I. And so, again, that was another area that is being reduced again as a, as a way to offset $1 million in compensatory funding. So it's not part of the general fund base allocation.
I'd like to ask another question on the compensatory funding. Is the amount that we receive from the state then based on our, the number of free and reduced lunch students we have? Or was this, did the state just generally cut back everybody's compensatory funding regardless of what their free and reduced lunch numbers were, if that's what it's based on?
Yeah, so it's, it's based on free and reduced lunch counts. Our count has been going down. Our concentration then of poverty on paper has been going down. That has been a concern for us because we don't know that we've necessarily seen that. We've, we've more been speculating that possibly people have not been completing the forms. And then, there's less counts, which leads to less funding. So the more education we can do in the fall to encourage people to at least apply, it'll be helpful for funding in the following year.
John, I have a question. So for the $1 million that our compensatory funding has gone down, how many students does it take to qualify to get a million in compensatory funding? Is that the right way to ask the question?
Sure. That is a good question that maybe Eric, if he's on the line, he could research how many, what our counts were last year versus what they were on, on the last form here for, for this year. It's somewhat based on concentration as well, so as the percentage at the building can also drive in the formula. So it's not just a pure count. So if it's a building that has 55% of the students versus a building that has 38%, the 55% is going to get more, obviously, because they have more kids. But then they're going to get a concentration factor as well. So they'll get even more because of that.
Okay.
And John, just to follow up, that number legs, correct? Because that's looking at a number from the previous year.
Yes. I'll write that down as a follow-up too, to get out to you later if we don't hear back yet in this meeting. All right, I'll keep going into secondary. In secondary this year, we did adjust our formula a little bit. How we did it last year is we took the number of students at our middle schools and we divided by 23.25. And then that gave us the number of FTE they were being allocated from the general fund for their secondary teachers. And this year, we raised that formula to 23.75. So we tweaked the formula by .5 at the middle school. And then at the high school, we raised it by 1.3. And that had the effect then of reducing staffing a little bit. What, and how we came to that decision is we went through our class listings. And so we looked at classes like agriculture education or communication arts. And we just started looking at the number of students that were in each section. And we noticed that the vast majority of sections were not staffed to 32 students. In fact, we had secondary classes that were running smaller than our elementary classes. And so we felt that the formula could be tweaked a little bit there to, to save a little bit of money and to make slightly larger class sizes at our secondary level when our elementary classes are running, you know, up to 31 as well.
I have another question. So do secondary principals have any discretion as to how they distribute their staffing so that if there is, say, an elective class with only 20 students, that they may increase the size of other classes? I'm not sure how you do that. Obviously, it's on the 160 that's in the contract.
Absolutely. That's the beauty, I believe, of the formula and the way we, by standardizing it and just saying, "Take the number of enrolled and divide by 26.8." Now you have 100% control of how much music and math and French and German you're going to have. You're going to make it fit. And if you want to have smaller music sections, go ahead, and it may come at a cost in that building of some other class or a larger section of something else. So they have complete control over that at the high school level now.
I, I know that in past years anyway, that at least some of our music electives at the high school level do buy additional staffing for other classes because they're not within that 32 students per class number.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So all total at the secondary level, so this is all middle school, all high school added together, there's a reduction of about 4.35 FTE because of those tweaks in the formula. I wanted to point out, I think this question came up today too, is like, okay, so these people that lost their jobs, where are they or what happened? We've been, to my knowledge, there's only a couple of teachers probably in FIED right now that we don't have a full position for them. And so through attrition, through retirements, through whatever, most, almost 100% of the people have a job. So this isn't, there weren't mass layoffs, there weren't people getting pink slipped or anything. You would have had to approve those already through the board anyway. But I just want to point out that people have jobs. They may have been displaced from the job they did have, but they may have, then they've been offered a different position to pick up at a different building or even in the same building, but, you know, just moving around, so. And our special areas were very flat this year. There was small adjustments in music and FIED, and that's, there's a real art to that. No pun intended, but you have to go through all of the different schedules and the fractional FTEs account for travel time. And then sometimes it just, it's not going to work out exactly the same, even though you need about the same music and FIED teachers at the elementary level. But sometimes you do have to tweak the FT just a little bit to account for that travel time, depending on how many buildings they have to cover in their schedule. Point out in our special ed that that's where we house, again, five EBD teachers or five special ed teachers that can be used at any department. So if you take five off of there, is the true number of EBD. And then wherever we need those five, anywhere within these categories, they'll be rolled out throughout the year as, as caseloads increase or students transfer in. Carla will go to the superintendent and ask for permission and, and we'll post those positions as needed. And then the last category here is the support teachers. So these are, sometimes these have student contacts, sometimes they don't have student contact. But they're generally the not, like, in your mind, standing in front of a class all day, teaching type of positions. So they're the supporting teachers. We do want to just point out under LSN here, we are not canceling our service to the non-public schools. They do have to pay for this anyway, but we've restaffed it and we've combined it with the regular LSN. So it may, the non-publics may now get their service from the LSN that's housed closest to their private school. And so that's why there's a bump up here in the LSN, and we've zeroed out the LSN non-public because there's not just one nurse dedicated to all Rochester non-public schools next year.
John, I have a question.
Yeah.
On the instructional coach and the two teachers on special assignment?
Yes.
So the instructional coach, .35, and then the, the 1.0s, were all three of them providing services for the graduate induction program?
Um, no, so the, the ones entitled instructional coach are within our buildings. And I didn't dig in to see where that .35 reduction was. It possibly was a building that, again, had bought up or bought extra time with their compensatory and had to reduce a little bit. The clinical coach down at the bottom was working in the GIP program. And then the implementation associate is working in Edison Curriculum Instruction, but it's all part of kind of the GIP program. And so when we go down in numbers of GIP students from Winona State, we are reducing the clinical coach and an implementation associate to go with that.
So we're just, we're, we're decreasing because we have less students that those two people have to serve. They didn't have any other jobs that we had to find some, someone to do. And sometimes people have different, different responsibilities, even though...
Sure, I would say for sure the clinical coach, because we have four less students. Then that's how much a clinical coach supervised was for graduate students. So that, obviously, the implementation associate, that work was less connected to the GIP program, and that will be more felt by the Edison Curriculum Instruction Department because there'll be one less person working there on, you know, any of the needs that we have.
So there, so it's curriculum and instruction's responsibility to figure out how to reassign that work. that, that work.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I don't know if, um, Carl or Carla or Mike want to just give any commentary on why we're reducing from 16 GIP students to 12 next year and, on the history on that?
Yeah, I can see that. And part of the, the, it's part of the agreement we have with Winona State, when we're up at 16, that's, we would have those two other positions. But when we reduce to 12, then that means they don't allocate those two positions along with the agreement we have. Uh, part of the reason is that we, um, have noticed over the last couple of years, it's, it's been more of a challenge for us to find openings to place those, um, GIP students. And as we, so we've taken that into consideration as we look into the future. And, uh, back to earlier, we were talking about potential less state funding, probably anticipating more reductions, uh, across the district that we're going to have fewer spots for these. So we felt that it was important to go to 12 for next year and probably that will be our number, uh, moving forward.
Okay. So this 7.68, when it says all is not all staff, it's just of the teaching, the Rochester Education Association, we'd be down 7.68 FTE, um, year over year. All right. Our para professionals. Um, I wanted to point out in the elementary para Spanish immersion, uh, we've, or not increased, we've just separated this out to make it more clear that these were the, the four positions that supported the Spanish immersion program at Gage. They were previously within just the elementary para line. So that's not a new add, but we did want to sort that out so that the principal could more clearly see what the staffing was that had been dedicated to the Spanish immersion program versus the, um, general education program at Gage. Most of the para positions are, are based on a formula and there, it's just a number of enrolled, projected enrolled students divided by a number, multiplied by another number, and it's equal across all of our elementary buildings. Our secondary buildings all have an equal allocation. And then this is another area where the principals choose to buy additional hours for additional support, whether it be playground or in the classroom or in the lunchroom, um, whatever they feel they need above and beyond what the base allocation gives them. And unfortunately then, when compensatory, um, is not what it was, then this is often an area that gets adjusted as well, same with some of those other positions that they have. And so unfortunately, overall, I believe we are down in, um, our special ed, uh, excuse me, in our para, I was just looking at special ed there and wanted to say that special ed we're also reducing a little bit because we're, look closer at all the IEPs and try to, where we could prioritize teacher FTE over para FTE if, if the IEPs and the service minutes, um, dictated that. So overall, we're down 11.4, um, para positions.
Yeah, John, too, I, I, I think, I don't know if you mentioned this, but sometimes, um, buildings may use some of their funding to buy up additional para hours. So some of the reductions may be, uh, they chose not to do that for next year as well.
That's right. That's right. Yep. All right. And then our last group, I've kind of lumped everything together as far as clerical maintenance, non-schedule, off-schedule, our supporting type of positions. These ones are sometimes contingent upon grants, sometimes they are managers discretion, working with their cabinet member, their, um, the superintendent. It's kind of all prioritized based on what the needs are in these supporting roles. Um, so for example, the accounting technician that we're adding, um, we've already executed on that and, and hired the second accounting technician in my department. But to afford that position, I, um, when I had a staff member leave the office manager position, I just did not repost that one. So that was a one-for-one swap, it's just a different job title and we're shifting some duties around to make it all work out. So some of, some of these are recategorizations from one work group to another work group. Some of them are based on funding where we've had to, um, uh, come, you know, reprioritize. And then some of them, like this American Indian Secretary and the Graduate Induction Program Secretary, those look like they were being eliminated, but then there was a new position posted at a .75 called Community Program Secretary that is taking over the work of what the American Indian Secretary did and the Graduate Induction Program Secretary did, and some additional duties that weren't done by anybody previously. So, um, there are restructurings, we can call them, uh, within this list too. Uh, that's also going on here with the Assistant Principal Secretary, the Guidance Office Secretary, maybe a Receptionist Secretary. Our high school principals came to us and said, we'd like an Assessment Secretary. So, uh, we want one per building, we all want one, these are the duties it's going to do, it's going to, um, do, um, some different things than we've done before to help with our guidance counselors. And, uh, we supported that change and it, and made it so it was budget neutral, but it, again, it meant giving up other kinds of positions to make it all happen. This happened in our maintenance group as well, where, um, you see some pluses and minuses, but, uh, that's been kind of a years-long restructuring effort, whereas jobs have come open in this Assistant Custodian Engineer Two, uh, we've replaced them with Custodian Two positions, um, just to get the, the, the replacement person working under a different job description with slightly different duties. Same thing with Operating Engineer, we took some of those positions and made a couple, um, additional utility support technicians, so they're more floating around and dealing with HVAC issues across the district versus just working on the boiler or the HVAC equipment at their one building. So, um, Scott's group is continuously rethinking how to best staff, but as you can see, um, they've kept the same amount of FTE year over year over year. So that's going to have to change, obviously, when we bring on new schools. Um, but for right now, they've had very flat staffing in maintenance for three years in a row.
John, would you, uh, speak to, um, unfilled positions? And I know, you know, typically in maintenance and sometimes in our para groups as well, you know, how that might factor in if, if positions have been left vacant for, you know, a while, then, you know, do we do something different or we do, you know, eliminate X amount or just any words on that, please?
Sure. Yeah, I've seen it both ways. I've seen where, um, maybe something's been eliminated, but then there's maybe been a different job posted, there's been, um, sometimes contracted services used. So like maintenance, if we can't fill all those positions, we might go to express employment professionals and say, you know, we have six openings, so give us six, you know, hourly people through your firm, um, to, to cover those. So we do a variety of things to, um, um, try to fill the positions. And that also could be mean even hiring our own subs, day-to-day subs or long-term subs or until we get the position filled.
Thank you.
Just kind of rolling through here, trying to see if there's anything that stands out. Like, you know, again, I can see like, we, we eliminated construction project assistants, but assistant, but then we added a construction services project engineer and I think there was an assistant coordinator of construction. So again, a restructuring took place where one job description was eliminated, but another one or two was added instead.
I, I have a question, and I don't know if it's for you, John, or for the superintendent, but, um, the, uh, youth housing specialist looks like a really interesting addition to our, um, services are available for kids. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
I am going to defer that one to either Carla or Mike.
Yeah, I think it has to do with some grant funding, but Carla, do you want to talk specifically about that?
I'll jump in. So that's a position that Melissa Brandt has been advocating for, for quite a long time. It's actually a position that supports students more one-to-one. Um, so they have a, the person has a case management load that allows her to work individually and then help provide resources and connections for our students that are homeless. Um, and Melissa had applied for an Otto, Otto Brummer grant, and she got that to, um, fund that position. It's been really, really valuable for our students. Um, the grant does run out, um, this fall, but we are working with the county for, um, to secure funding with another grant to allow us to continue with that position.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Um, I really appreciate, um, getting more information on that and just the, um, you know, bringing to light that our staff recognizes, you know, the really unique needs of our students and, um, and ways to fund positions that help support them. You know, we've all, we've all talked about, um, our homeless and in transition students and, you know, that's not, that's not something that everybody knows about or thinks about. So appreciation, um, for that.
All right. I think that's the end of the FTE. So before we move on it, were there any specific questions that didn't get addressed in some of the changes or proposals that are out there?
I have a, a couple of questions.
Sure.
Sort of a curiosity thing, and sorry if I, if I missed, if you've said this, um, I'm still having some technical difficulties, so I miss, you know, 10 seconds at a time that I never get back.
Oh, no.
So, um, that, the science fair change in FTE, can you explain that for the public?
Yes.
It just from .2 to 0.
Yes. Um, so when we first had put that in the budget a couple of years back, we were assuming that maybe it'd be interesting for a current science teacher within the REA to, uh, take that extra .2 and, and help run the, and coordinate the science fair. That didn't happen. Um, we were able to fill it with, um, somebody from the community who was paid a stipend basically for, for coordinating and doing the work. So, um, there's no reduction to the science fair, science fair is not going away, um, but I didn't feel like we need to carry a .2 on the FTE listing for something that we're just paying a stipend, uh, to somebody who's not a, uh, an employee, current employee within another group.
Well, once again, it's not really something that's going away, it's something that was on paper and wasn't being used.
Exactly. Good way of saying it. It was on paper as a .2 and, and listed as such in, in case we needed it, but, um, it was paid differently. And so we really don't need to carry it as part of the teacher's FTE listing.
Okay.
And I ask my second one. On page 69, uh, I, I understand that there's just a lot of fluctuations that go, um, up and down unexpectedly. Um, but on page 69, there's a speech language impaired line that's going both up and down. Is that just based on individual student makeups that we have that year as opposed to like a, a programmatic change? It's the third and...
Yep, I'd have to dig into that just a little bit further to see, but, um, really how you're coding your work, our, our employees is supposed to be based on the, the students that they're serving. So it could mean that there's less need in a given year. It also could have been lumped together with line 420, Special Education Aggregate, when there's more than one disability. So maybe they were serving students with more than just, um, speech language impairment.
I just wanted to reassure people that that wasn't necessarily a programmatic cut.
Correct. Correct. No, there's no loss of programming there. If anything, it's probably increasing in program, but the costs are probably combined with other line items in there, depending on the student, the overall student makeup at the given time.
Thank you.
I have a, a follow-up to the .2 science, um...
Yeah.
Budget item, so it's not being accounted for as a .2 FTE from a teacher, but there must be funds somewhere else in the budget then to pay the person who's actually doing it, so.
Correct. It's within our Fund Four, um, budget and under a, kind of an other salary payment line item. So it'd probably be within the, on page 94, for example, it's probably under the line that says 186.
Thank you.
The dollars are there. Yep. All right. The appendix two here just kind of breaks down and just helps people visually see how do, by building, how do all the positions kind of sort them out by, um, employment group or union group? I believe it was Mark you had asked last year if we could see the enrollment, the projected enrollment by building. So I did include that as the first column this year, so you can kind of eyeball it and see, um, how each building compares. I am sorry that I'm missing the note at the bottom of this page, it was supposed to be here, that basically said, I know this says it's only 17, 853. Again, this was the May 14th, the number of students who are signed up as of May 14th for the net 21 school year. And we expect students to register in the summer, there's lots of registrations, walk-in traffic generally in the summer. Um, I would just comment that, you know, we are 600 away from the 18,400-ish mark, um, which is a little bit of a bigger gap than we've seen in the past. So it does make me wonder if either people are holding off on registering or they haven't done it because we haven't been open since March 23rd physically, we've been open online only, or, um, what the other reasons are. So we need to continue to watch what the enrollment does over the summer as we reopen our building next week and, and go from there.
John, can you speak to, um, the enrollment and how, and the funding pieces of how we use the October 1st count in terms for our formula? But, um, does, does it fluctuate? You know, people talk about seat time or the misconception of we make kids go to school in a snowstorm, so we get money for them, or can you respond to that?
Yeah, so funding is really based from day one to the last day of school, based on the enrollment of the students. So as long as a student is enrolled, they're generating the revenue. Um, and so they're getting membership days for their enrolled days. I believe it's after 15 days of absence. So if a student does not show up for 15 consecutive days, they must be dropped from enrollment. So then that is when they stop generating revenue for the district. Is that the 16th day basically of an absence? So, um, and MDE, you know, and through the executive order, they were not counting those days that we were closed for planning, for transitioning to distance learning and such. But, um, we actually saw our enrollment tick up from March into April. So, um, I didn't necessarily expect that that would happen in the pandemic, that our enrollment would go up at that point. Um, so it'll be interesting to see what happens, um, in the fall. But, you know, if, if, say, for example, 300 students decide to stay at home in September, but work their way back by October, we'd basically be out maybe one ninth of the funding for 300 students. So, you know, we're not going to lose a whole year or anything like that if, if some students decided to un-enroll and not come for a while in the fall.
Thank you, John.
The second page of this just shows what the staffing was for last year with the actual enrollment then from October 1st, that kind of line in the sand. And so really what I'm going to, I'm going to skip ahead to the next page here. This shows then the projected enrollment change by building. So as of right now, Bamber would go down by 44 students if they get no more registrants. Um, and their staffing is going down 1.67 FTE by losing 1.76 teachers, .75... losing 1.76 teachers, 0.75 paraprofessionals, but picking up another non-scheduled position and a little fractional piece of a student nutrition employee. So you can see like Bishop actually has more students enrolled as of right now even than last October 1st. Same with Elton Hills, but all the other elementary schools are just slightly down or below where they were on October 1st. So maybe pause there and just see is there anything that stands out or any questions that need to be asked at this point on the by-building FTE? I'd point out that Mayo High School is going up 122 students at this point. Probably the largest increase of any school building. I think they are approaching, or they're for sure going to be over that 1,800 marker now for next school year.
I was just going to say that Willow and Mayo went up. It's like we could use a school down there somewhere.
Growing enrollment in the South.
Good point.
John, do you want to speak to any, just on the, our other schools which are either more? I'm trying to think of what I want to ask. It's sort of like, is it harder to plan for our programs like an ALC or a RAIL or LEAP because, or a RightFit? Because some of them are, you know, opting in, some of them are recommended, some of them. Yes is, is the, is the short answer to my question.
So I'd say ALC, probably what's going to happen here is they're not going to be down 170 students. They're probably going to get some kids from Century JM and Mayo who are going to be transferring over there and, and also from other districts. ALC picks up students from other districts surrounding us. I'd say RAIL probably is not, is probably pretty consistent because those are students that have been with us for many years. It's their last three or so years with us. So that probably is pretty stable and we know who they are. But yeah, some of these smaller other schools do require some thought into what will the enrollment look like? And again, I think some of them lag because they're, you know, moving around in the summer and withdrawing from one school up here and then coming down to another school down, down here too.
And John, I'll just add in there as well that especially for mighty, we do evaluations throughout the year typically in a typical year. So those numbers are always low now and by the fall, they will for sure rise up and continue to rise throughout the year.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thanks, Carla. And thanks, John. Just again, just for the good of the cause that this students and enrollment are fluctuating and we're working on staffing probably on a weekly, if not daily basis for some of our programs.
I would say it's almost a weekly basis on, on these and we will monitor that all through the summer. So for anyone who's concerned, we aren't going to have enough staff. We, we look at that all the time and are rolling out extra sections as needed. So.
Thank you.
John, this is Kathy. I have one question on the elementary schools. So it looks like Franklin has the most decrease in, I'm sorry about the background noise. The most decrease in FTEs, but there are other buildings that actually have higher enrollment changes. Does that have to do with the compensatory funding?
Yep. Franklin is generally our building that gets the most compensatory and Title I. So if there's a major reduction there, they, they would likely feel it. Now, I would also say Franklin, if we look back up to last year, Franklin had 105 FTE plus the Montessori FTE of another nine. So, you know, there's 115 FTE in that building. So they're basically the largest staffed elementary school along with Gage.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to move on into Appendix three then. And on these ones, I guess I don't want to obsess about every line because there's too many lines. Even in the form we're presenting it here is a much further condensed view than what the system really has. If we showed you every line in the budget system, there'd be 22,161 lines of data to go through. So we're trying to just be transparent and show how it comes right out of the finance software and kind of show you. But we do know that from year to year, not so much in this higher level section, but maybe in the next level down, there's shifts in programs. And that's what Melissa was pointing out, like SLP this year might look lower. That doesn't mean there's actually even been a cut to the SLP. It could have gone the other way. There could be more programming, but codes shift from time to time based on guidance we get from MDE. And we implement that and then it sometimes looks awkward in different codes as we go. So I think maybe what I would rather do is see in Appendix three, four, and five, if you had jotted down any questions ahead of time that you wanted to ask, maybe we can just jump to that and talk about it. Otherwise, I would suggest we move into Appendix six fairly quickly.
Board members, I like John's suggestion. I personally don't have any questions on those sections, but we'll give a 10 to 15 second pause for somebody to either raise their hand or jump in and chat or just turn your, unmute yourself and ask the question. I see, I think Ms. Workman has something, maybe.
Yes. And I'm sorry I didn't put my hand down from before. My arm was getting tired, so I finally gave you that out. So we've had the budget book for just a few days. Will there be an opportunity for us to send in additional questions that we didn't think of this time or might have after more detailed perusal of the budget book? Since I'm assuming it'll come to us as a briefing item next Tuesday, correct?
Absolutely. So we have this set up already for the June 2nd agenda. I'll give a short overview, but that'd be the perfect time that we can ask more questions. Preferably if you had them in ahead of time, we can prep a little bit better for them. But we certainly can go through any further questions next Tuesday.
And just a reminder that of course, Mr. Carlson and Superintendent and the rest of Cabinet are thoughtful answering our questions and we try to do the best we can sending them in ahead of time. So we do appreciate that. I also appreciate pointing out process-wise, so this will come back as a briefing item next Tuesday, June 2nd. And then likely it will not be moved to action, but will be approved in consent agenda on June 16th. I'm looking across, way, way, way across the room for Wendy's signal. So that's our process going forward and appreciate that. Also like to point out, reiterate, as Ms. Workman has said, you know, we get this budget book on Friday. And so we spend, board members spend a good amount of time over there weekend looking at it and sometimes we could use a little bit more to dig in. So appreciate your openness to allow questions going forward. Thank you.
And can I just add that I know that there were questions that were sent yesterday and that we received the answers before the meeting tonight. So thank you to everybody who put in the effort to get the questions answered before the meeting. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, not a problem.
I, I second that.
And I'll just point out one other thing here. So as you're reading through these pages in Appendix three, four, five, 18, 19 column is finalized actual numbers. So those were the real audited numbers and finalized. 19, 20 is what I would have gone through with you a year ago and just said, this is what we are proposing as the original budget. And then you approved. 19, 20 accounts for all the changes I brought to you. I think I've come twice or three times so far this year to say, please approve these budget changes. So these would match, you know, the difference between 13.6 million, for example, and 15.1. We would track back through two or three board meetings and see all the incremental changes to get to that number. And then this is what we're proposing in the far right column as the starting point for next year. So that's what you're actually being asked to approve a few weeks from now. Right. Well, maybe I should just jump ahead to Appendix six. Oh, that's too big. Okay. So just bear with me. We'll read through one line and show you how this sheet works just to refresh your memory. But basically the general fund, ending fund balance on June 30th, all funds within the general fund, 36,378. Then we add in the approved revenue budget of 239,499. Minus the approved expenditure budget, which includes sometimes using carryover money, fund balances, so on and so forth. So usually is a higher amount than the revenue amount, 246 million. Would leave us with 29,849 on June 30th. Now, we believe we're going to end higher than that when we finalize the books over the summers or over the summer. Again, that kind of, I've been talking to you about having 50 or so open positions when I've talked about budget changes. So you know, in some cases we are spending less than what we have in the budget for salaries and benefits. So there will probably be some savings. There'll probably be unspent site supply budgets and some donated money and things like that. So we do think that that number will end higher than 29 million at the end of the year. But if we keep reading across, then this is what you're being asked to approve for the revenue budget for next year, And an expenditure budget of 241 million would leave us a fund balance of 28,116 a year plus from now. And then I just point out that these top three lines are all considered the general fund, even though in our tracking system, we separate them out into three separate funds internal, for internal use. MDE considers this all general fund. So of the 29,882, at the very bottom here, you see the unassigned portion is projected to be 8% at the end of the year. Again, I think that's going to be higher than 8%. And then if everything happened the way it's proposed here, we'd be at 19.6 million next year. So that'd be 8.1% fund balance. And that's just taking this number, 19 million, dividing it by the expenditure budget. So 19,576 divided by 241 would be a fund balance of 8.1%. So within or above policy of 6.0%. And all these other columns or all these other numbers in blue and red and purple, those are different fund balances within the general fund that are not part of the unassigned or the free that you have discretion about. They're restricted either by law or assigned by management to hold the funds for some purpose like the donated funds. We want to hold that until they can be used for what the donor wanted them on, so on and so forth. So. I'd point out that building construction, even though we spend $74 million or that's what we're asking you to approve for the initial expenditure budget, we would still then have $98 million over the next couple of years to keep continuing building out all of the projects in the referendum. So I believe when you read your resolution in a couple of weeks or a few weeks from now, you'll be asked to approve an expenditure budget of 403,376,908. It's summarized by all these different funds here. Any questions on kind of how the math works on that page? Great. All right. I, I'm wondering, Deborah, if you wanted to take a break, if this is where we should do it? Because I, I was wondering if this might be where we have the most discussion tonight? Or if we just want to review the forecast quickly and then have further discussion about it at our next meeting? I think it's your call on how you'd like to proceed there.
I appreciate that, John. I think this is a good time to just take a quick break. And partly that's due to, you know, my having to watch everything and it's good for me to get a little stand up and, you know, stretch. So I am going to motion us to go into, motion to recess for five minutes at 7:15 PM. Thank you. Okay, folks. I will reconvene the meeting at 7:20 PM. John, we're back to you in Appendix seven. Thank you.
All right. Before we do that, Eric looked up for me the number of free and reduced kids and the change there. We are down 275 students. So that's what's making up the $1 million change. All right.
Thank you.
And I suppose you're expecting me to share my screen again.
Do you have to share, John?
That is not the right screen.
That's not the right screen.
That is the right screen.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
So the next part is a little bit different because we are putting in two different versions of the five-year general fund financial forecast. Normally we just do one that's a reasonable estimate of how we've usually done it. And this time, just given all the things that are going on, we thought it would be prudent to show you two different scenarios, a best-case scenario and a worst-case scenario. And the only real difference between them is that the best case assumes that funding will continue as it has been, meaning we expect about 2% to grow our state aid. And the worst case is what if the state is unable to increase funding? So we did a 0% and just tried to show you what the differences are there. But before we look at those and see the graphs, I thought maybe I just should talk about some of the other assumptions that we have put in here. Sorry. Voter-approved referendum of $776 per pupil unit with inflationary increases will be in place through school year 25, 26. We could do a vote for that to renew that or increase that. Well, first off, to renew it, it would be like fall of '24 or fall of '25. If you want to do a vote to ask for an increase, you could do that at any time. The current maximum there is 1,779.5 per pupil unit. So there's about $1,000 per pupil unit to go to be within state law maximum if we wanted to do that. That would take, we need to have a lot of discussion about that, obviously, before we would ever get to that point. Local optional revenue of 724 is assumed to continue indefinitely now that that's worked into law, that the board can just keep accepting that every year. I do think it's worth our while to continue to lobby the state that that number would grow eventually with inflation because it's been locked in at a number and it doesn't change by inflation. Unlike the voter-approved referendum is going to keep increasing a little bit if inflation keeps going up. Compensatory funding, again, we've talked about this over and over, that it's about $1 million lower compared to last year because of the less number of students in October of '19 compared to October of '18. We always assume that our restricted funding, whether it be federal money or grant money, donated money, will have expenditures that match their revenue. So once we're doing the forecast, we go through and we assume that expenses don't exceed the revenues. Our, all of our employment contracts are settled through next month. And then additionally for next year, teachers, principals, and off-schedule are settled for the next, the upcoming school year. Off-schedule even one year beyond that. But for all of our other groups, we've assumed that they would continue to get adjustments for their pay and benefits of approximately 2.5% per year. And that is all-inclusive of any steps, lanes, longevity increases, COLAs, cost of living adjustments, that it would stay within that parameter of 2.5%. We are adding in 10 FTE. We are adding in ten FTEs per year for contingency purposes. But then additionally, in the next several years, we've also added in another ten every year beyond that. So, you know, theoretically, five years out, we have fifty more teachers in the budget than we do today. Just to acknowledge that we are continuing to grow, we assume growth in revenue within our forecast because of student counts. So it would be prudent to assume some additional staffing. We have put our contracted services, supplies, capital expenses at a three percent growth rate in the forecast. Again, just to acknowledge that sometimes utilities and other things don't just grow at two or two point five percent just because we want them to. Sometimes they are growing at a, at a higher percentage than, than what we would like. And our leases and debt payments, we look to see what the actual payment schedule is and we work that into the forecast. So finally, this is the new information I've been talking about now for several months that we needed to acknowledge that we're opening new school buildings in the twenty-three school year. So that's fall of twenty-two. And we've done that. We've gone through and we've estimated what we think we need above and beyond at the new bishop, the new long fellow, the brand-new middle school, and the new elementary school at the Schmidt Park location and tried to acknowledge that there's extra costs for utilities and data lines and custodians and principals and all that. And so we put that in the twenty-three budget so we can start talking about how this is going to go when we get there and what do we need to adjust now to, to get there. So here's the best-case scenario in the way you're used to seeing it. Basically, revenues, this is the current year in the far-left column. The proposed budget is in the second column. Again, sometimes it looks like it's going down because we have sometimes one-time money, donated money, grant money in the current year, but we don't necessarily assume that in the next year. So again, this point seven percent reduction is not an indication that we think we're going down in students or anything like that. It could most likely do that one-time stuff. And then expenditures the same way. It always looks like it's going down. But that's because, again, we don't assume any carryover money or anything like that until we close out the books. So we're starting with the original budget in this column. Again, I said this, there does, there is a deficit, one point seven million. But as I've explained, we are using money from the long-term facilities, maintenance budget, the fund balance of about two point two million. So had we not decided to work that in the original budget, we'd actually be showing a surplus right now, about five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars in our original budget. So that's what I mean by structurally balanced, that take out that one-time big money that we had setting aside in a fund balance, we have a, a budget that shows a surplus for next year. But then, as, as we go through and we continue to add employees, we continue to add raises, the costs keep growing. But even in the best-case scenario, state aid and, and property taxes don't necessarily keep up with that growing and the deficit becomes three point six million. Then we open up new schools. We might have a deficit of nine point five million. If we keep everything we have today and we just keep inflating all the costs, then it grows to twelve point nine million. And, you know, these kinds of numbers of nine and twelve are just unsustainable. You can, you can spend into your savings and use fund balance to get you through a year or two. But if you keep doing that, you will, well, by twenty-four, you'd be in statutory operating debt. You'd be under a special state plan. So we, we know that even in the best-case scenario, something has to change. So it either means a combination of new revenue, using some of our savings, or reducing expenditures and finding how, you know, a plan to, to do that as best as possible. So again, that's the best-case scenario. This kind of just graphically shows how revenues are, are growing, expenditures are growing faster. This graph, it's showing what the deficit is. And then it kind of just shows how the fund balance will just go away by the twenty-four school year. Now, in all transparency, for my nine years of being at the district, we've always shown that five, four, five years out, it's going to be a big problem. But we deal with that in the short term by making prudent decisions with, you know, trying to be as efficient as possible, reducing some positions here, some positions there, trying to eliminate any contracted services we can. So we're always trying to deal with those in the short term so that they have an impact in the long term. And the superintendent's been very thoughtful and very careful about doing that year over year so that we don't ever see this, this happen, the year four, year five situation has not happened. Left unaddressed, it will happen. But again, that's where you got to be thoughtful in the short term to make some of those decisions. Now, worst-case scenario, again, you hardly see any change in revenue here, but the expenditures just keep going up the same. And before you know it, you have a six-million-dollar deficit, a fifteen-million-dollar deficit, eighteen-million-dollar deficit. You basically move up that statutory operating debt a year earlier. And so instead of it happening in the twenty-four year, it's in the twenty-three year where it's a negative fund balance.
Is this a good time for questions?
This is a great time for questions now.
Great. So tell me if I have the timing right in my head. So this year, we're looking at being able to stay above the unassigned fund balance level of six percent. Next year, in the worst-case scenario, we would be breaking our own policy by going down to five point five. But we don't know that by this time of year yet because the legislature very often drags that out into May. So then we would not have an opportunity to turn around and react to that with a budget-cutting process. We would have to just take that into account internally for that one year. Am I on target so far?
You are on target so far, yes.
So if we, then we would have the heads-up that, you know, bad stuff was coming down the pipe because we got a zero percent increase. And we'd be able to rely on our fund balance for the first year. But for the second year, we would have to do full-on budget-cutting process, not just a little bit of trimming internally where we could, but we'd be dealing with, with, I don't want to say panic, but, you know, it's, it's, it's not a fun prospect.
No, it'd be on par with, it'd be on par with probably what happened in two thousand and ten was when I would say was the last major reduction, when it was a very extended process and a lot of tough decisions being made back then.
I remember that, yes. So would it be your recommendation that we start thinking about those things now or wait until next May when we know whether or not we're getting that zero percent instead of two percent or somewhere in between?
Would the superintendent want to make any comments at this point?
I would like, yes, we will, as we start preparing for, not next year, but the following year's budget, we will start looking at potential ways to make reductions. We, even for next year's budget, there were additional positions in areas that we were wanting to look at trying to improve or grow. But as we were getting further into the pandemic and realized that there's a potential zero, zero increase, we knew we could not add those positions, so we did not do that for next year's budget.
So, but my question is more about the timing. So is it twelve months from now that we'll be having the discussion about how we want to proceed with a much larger budget-cutting process than we've had to deal with in recent years? Or is that something we'd want to discuss sooner?
Well, I think it's something we will look at probably next, I would say, when we start the budget process in January, at looking at trying to find a way to make some reductions at that time to try to make the following year's less, less of a deficit. So as we start the planning process for the, the next year's budget in January, so I think as we get closer to next January, we'll have to have a conversation about how, how that should happen and what that should look like.
And between now and January, we'll have the benefit of getting one more state official financial forecast statewide. So that'll give us the November, and then they update that in February. So in case we need to make any last-minute adjustments to what we think we should do, we'll have February, March, April to do that.
So you're saying at that point, when we get the updated forecast from the state, we'll be able to see the writing on the wall even though they won't have voted on it yet?
That's, yes, that's what I think, that we will wait to see what their November forecast. That'll be pretty close to what they'll probably, you know, they'll, they'll foreshadow what they're going to say in February, I think, by November, so.
That's wonderful to know. Thank you.
This is Kathy. To build on Melissa's question, Superintendent, so the process that you and Cabinet and staff have been using to determine the budget for the following year, the, the process that we've seen in action, the decisions you've made such as not adding new positions or moving around other, other FTEs, you're anticipating that for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget, whose work starts in January, you would work with that same kind of process? What I think I hear Melissa asking is, at what point do we have a conversation about a larger-scale process that might look more like what happened in twenty-ten, where there was a formal budget-reduction committee and we, we included a comprehensive look across the entire budget from soup to nuts? And pretty much everything was on the table because we had so much to cut. Are you not anticipating the need for that in, for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget, but more for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
Yes, but I'm saying what for the, prior to that year, we want to start chipping away so to make that number smaller. And the, the bottom line is that, as John said earlier tonight, when eighty percent of your budget is in people, and as we shared with you, the, usually March is when we really are going through the people for the following year. So we need to have a decision made prior to that March date on position reductions so we know going into staffing, individual buildings, we know we're going to have to make reductions in certain areas. So, but I, our thought, thinking is that you start looking at a year ahead of time before that big year and chip away there so it makes that following year's number smaller that you have to hit. And as far as the process, we'll have to work with the board on what that process is. I'm not a, a big supporter of having thousands and, thousands is the wrong number, having several people in that because my, my experience in the forty-plus years of being in public education, it's hard to find people to look system-wide. It's more, my child was in orchestra, so I don't want you to cut orchestra, or my child was in this program, so I don't want you to cut this program. But we are, we will work with the, the board and determine that's the process that we would like to use. We will offer several different options, but as a board, you'll have to decide on how you want to, to do that.
What I'm seeing, if I can jump in, is there's going to be a necessity to figure out what the process is and how it's going to be structured, what kind of community input we want, how do we create what might end up being a zero-based budget in terms of we prioritize where the cuts are, then you get to your, your number and then you stop. And then if that's, if that process has already been set up, then the following year, if you need to make more cuts, you start where you left off. You know, maybe tweak it a little bit, but I'm really concerned that we're going to get caught here with absolutely nothing in place to help us through the process in a, not only in a timely way, but also in a very, you use the word systems, very systematic way and to get the voice of the people. I mean, I know, Mike, you keep harping on orchestra, so I'm, I'm glad to see that's not going to be cut ever. But I think the needs of the community or the priorities of the community are important and it is possible to sort those out and figure it out so that if, you know, I think that as a board member, that we should cut all of our window washers and the community is saying, no, 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 we can't, we can't cut any window washers, then that has to be a big part of the decision. Any extra window washers you can send to my house. Thank you. This is going to be, I think it's going to be a fairly complex project. And I think it's also going to take some time and some thought. And I would like to suggest, or I won't like to suggest, I suggest that the board have a separate session on this initially to discuss not the process, but how do we establish the process and get a framework in place so that if the state comes down the road and says, hey, 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 you thought the worst-case scenario was zero percent, we're going to take money away from you. Not suggesting that's going to happen, but, you know, if it's, if it's going to rain at some point, you know, it's better to go out and buy your umbrella now than wait until you're in the middle of a storm. So that's, that's kind of the way I see it.
First of all, thank you for providing the forecast, both a best-case and worst-case. As for being asked, or will be in a few weeks to approve the twenty-twenty-one budget, it's good to see where we are. It seems like in both the executive director of finance and the superintendent have said, well, you know, that they will recommend strategies to begin that discussion probably for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget moving forward. And it seems like, I believe my fellow board members are very much interested in the sooner the better. And, and so for that twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that seems like that would be the ideal time to begin that. There may be some educational things we can do in the meantime, not as relates to the twenty-twenty-one budget, but things we can maybe learn along the way that will prepare, equip us for the discussions that we will have and decisions which will come forth. I'm basically saying it was very, of great value to see and have this document as it's laid out and to give us an opportunity to anticipate what is before us. And I look forward to the opportunity to be engaged and a part of that process.
Thanks, John. I'll jump in. I have two questions, possibly some comments. But, John, have we, in, in your time, have we ever had more than a two percent increase?
I don't remember greater than two percent. We have had less than two percent.
Great, thank you. And then, do you foresee any, I hate to use the word savings, efficiencies from the last short period of sheltering at home? And they may be, you know, small, but in terms of utilities or whatever, just thoughts on that?
Sure. We do know that, we haven't seen the final, final numbers, but that we avoided probably around a hundred thousand dollars of utilities just in the month of April by not having a school. Now, obviously, it's unrealistic to plan that we're never going to be turning the heat on again. But yes, those things will accrue to the fund balance and help build up our savings account to help maybe glide into that budget process for twenty-one dash twenty-two.
Other questions or comments, board members?
I have a question. You know, one of the things that you've mentioned, John, is over the years, this is kind of very similar to what you've seen where, you know, three or four years out, it's always doom and gloom. One of the things that I do think would be helpful is if you had kind of a long-term histogram of that, you know, kind of showing what you and Mike have done, you know, making these small adjustments every year, has kept pushing that out. You know, so when somebody new looks at this and they just see that, oh, no. You know, so when somebody new looks at this and they just see that, oh, no, in three years, we're going to be in a very bad place, you know, this, you know, a long term histogram would show them that historically, this is how the projects, the projections is ours to spend. And this is how we've adjusted every year. And that's just how we've kept pushing it off or pushing it down the road successfully.
Yep. I like that idea. That's a good suggestion. We can work on preparing that because we have all this documented through board docs, all the various projections. We just need to pull it all together and kind of summarize it like that.
Other questions or comments, board members? I don't know what a histogram is, but it sounds like something John does, not a doctor. So maybe that's okay. Little bit of levity. My thought, John, based on your explanations and some board member comments, I think the, the struggle for me is, as all of us, of course, is the unknown and, you know, what might happen statewide or federally. You know, I don't know if we can call it a silver lining, but we know that all districts across the state and country are going through similar experiences and are going to have, are having probably similar discussions along the way. Perhaps because you folks all know that I'm kind of a visual person and if you were all here, I'd make Wendy have my little whiteboard up so I could scribble on it. But maybe just some, some sort of visual in terms of timeline, as you said, you know, when the state reports out in November, that's kind of a cue for us to to have a little bit more information. And then, you know, as I'm trying to visualize what you and superintendent have said, you know, in January is when you start, you know, you start developing the budget for 2022, 2021, 22, whatever, all those years that no one, we can't remember what they are because they all have a two in front of them now. But that might be helpful, just big picture wise as decisions, information points and decisions as we move forward in the next 12, 18, 24 months. And then I think maybe from that, we can kind of feed in some other things about when we would have, possible have discussions about process and when those would have to be, take place, including of course, as you've already mentioned, referendum sunsetting or opportunities to look at referendum buildings. Just to kind of the big picture timeline of, of some financial discussions that should probably be taking place between administration and the board.
So if I'm hearing it right, the superintendent and I could work together to kind of give like a, here's a deadline or we should have a conversation about this by this date. And so if we work backwards, you know, we can kind of decide what months certain conversations should be had.
Right. And I think that would help board members and community feel assured that, you know, you have this well in hand and we kind of have a plan going forward for when those things will occur. I see Director Nathan has appeared. Go ahead.
Hello. I think also given the increased focus on the worst case scenario in the state legislature with regard to education funding, I think that'll be in the media a lot. So when those announcements come from the state about various milestones related to funding, it would be helpful for me to have it from you to say, and here's how we're interpreting the impact on our district. Because, you know, a lot of those media stories talk about the big numbers and the overall state impact. But it would, it would help, I think, to have those periodic updates from you. This is how we're interpreting the latest news.
That sounds reasonable.
Oh, Director Marvin. Go ahead, please.
John, I just want to say, I so appreciate the work that you and your staff have done to provide accurate, informed information. And although there's a lot of bad, potentially bad news, I think this is exactly how we have to address the way we move forward is with the worst case, the best case scenarios and to ensure that everyone who cares about education, which shouldn't be everyone, understands that there are some financial issues that this district doesn't control, but that we are absolutely committed to moving forward, to doing the best job we can for all of our kids. And I think having the facts, the numbers, the data provided is our best way forward. So thank you. And also I would like, John, for you to ensure that we don't face the worst case scenario. So just get back to me on that because I've been here for a long time in this school district and we have made it through for decades and decades. And right now it's all on you. So just go for it. Thank you. I'll just stop now.
All right. Thanks.
Director Marvin is going to do color commentary in her next career. And, you know, and we all joke, John, that you, you've come to us with your, your crystal ball and we ask you to do so much. So we do really appreciate that. And so is there anything else? I see perhaps some more questions or comments, but is there anything else you would like us to know, Mr. Carlson?
No, I, I think we're good.
Board members?
I just want to add to that comment from Director Marvin that if the superintendent, we are, we are asked to speak to our legislators as school board members from MSBA and AMSD. But of course, if there is something that we should specifically be doing legislative work on or advocacy that we think will benefit our financial position, let us know. Because if not, I don't think there's any better time for us to raise our voices than when we look at this potential worst case scenario.
Okay, board members. I'll give you another 10 seconds or so to raise a hand or unmute for any kind of wrapping up. Oh, Superintendent Munoz, you've raised your hand. Go ahead, please.
Yes, just a couple of comments. If you have additional questions for the next board meeting, the sooner you can get them to us, the better. We have a pretty heavy agenda for our cabinet meeting next Tuesday. So if we can get them prior to Tuesday or even yet this week, so we can work on them and not have to, have to do that during cabinet, that would be greatly appreciated. The other thing we probably need to work out and maybe, maybe we can do this at our next meeting is we do need a representative from, for the high school league, a board member to serve on that. So we need to have a conversation about that. And I apologize for not having my camera on. As I was looking out my basement window when the storm hit, my umbrella was flying around. My deck umbrella was flying around and getting awful close to hitting one of my windows. So I had to go out in the rain and grab it so it wouldn't break a window. So that's why my camera's been off.
You, you are, you are absolved from not having your cap, your camera on, although I don't know if you were here earlier when I said next time I wanted everyone to show their pets on screen, if you had such a thing or picture of grandchildren or other favorite person. So not to, something anyway, although I'm happy to see all your lovely faces when we are still so far apart, but hoping to be back together again soon. Another 10 seconds for any further questions for John. It looks like Ms. Workman.
Yes. Are we having the meeting next Tuesday in the same format? We're not in the boardroom yet, are we?
No, we're not. Not in the boardroom yet. We're still, we're still under the under 10 person guideline. So we still have to be meeting remotely. All right. Well, we've all shared appreciation and thanks to John, John's department, superintendent, cabinet. You know, our Academy Award speeches go on and on. Wendy's going to play me off. Thanks to Wendy too. You know, this is really, you know, a Herculean effort. We know it takes a lot of time, but we also know it's really important. So we really appreciate all of that. And, you know, I think we're getting the hang of this virtual thing. I really appreciate folks chiming in, raising hands, all of that. And I hope we don't have to do it forever because it's, it's lonely around here, me and Wendy and Kurt in a booth. But I miss seeing you all in person. So for the good of the cause, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:55 PM.